Okay.
Where was I? Where was I? What in the world is this? What the hell's going on with this app? Bro, what the heck? Okay. Maybe I can do something about this. Man. Um, let me see. Give a feedback next time. So troll. Only Roydons? Ah, you make it sound terrible. You make it sound like a... I mean besides the fact that it's a reference to OnlyFans, you make it sound like a freaking disease. Only Roydons. Hmm. I don't think anything else got erased. This is so stupid, man. What the fuck? Alright, what am I working on? I did this, I think. Union accountable collection of measurable sets is measurable. I think this is this one. Yes. Wait, where the fuck did I put this? This, it's this, it's this. Oh, I suck that. Oh my. What is this? Bro. It's just erasing random shit. The fuck happened to my app? Oh, it's in black. This is so troll, man. I guess it's a good thing I'm streaming this shit. Yeah, I did this. What else did I do? I did um... Not sure I did that. It's 2.12. This has a name. What's the name? It's called excision. Okay, excision. This is... Call this something? This is countable additivity. What the fuck is this shit called? Hmm. I guess it's countable additivity on A intersect E K. That's one way we can look at it. Okay. Complements are measurable. It's complement, not compliment, right? Complement. Complement. Let's call it the universal set, so it's clear. Hmm. I didn't even use the right letters here. What the fuck? Okay. I don't know what to call this. Okay, is the order correct? Let's see. This shit pisses me off. Set with measure zero are measurable. That's empty set two. Twelve. Thirteen, fourteen. One, fifteen. Sixteen, seventeen. 2.15. So just write 2.15 here. Okay, this is nineteen, this is twenty. Okay, what do I have next? This, the union is done. Every interval is measurable. Oh, this looks kind of long. In algebra and is closed with respect to countable unions. Is it safer algebra in this book? Collection of subsets of R is an algebra provided it contains R and is closed with respect to relative complements and finite unions. This is completely different from the previous edition. Interesting. Okay, let's just rewrite it in terms of the newer edition book. Collection of subsets of R is called in algebra provided it contains R and is closed with respect to relative complements. Maybe this means the same thing, but I'm not sure. Relative complements. If this is true, then this makes sense. The definition of the sigma algebra. Where is it at? It's after the interval. We can define it now, or we can at least put it on paper now. Okay. Should call this a definition instead of a note. Well, that means I have to change the number in a little. Why? Y. Two point eighteen. This is two point nineteen. This is the algebra. Measurable sets. Like a result basically. Let's write this by. And then the rest is just copied, paste. Okay, change the color. Easy. Off and fifteen. Twenty nine, I mean twenty, no this is not nineteen, this is twenty one. Two. We have the sigma algebra. What's wrong with this thing? It's two point twenty three? This is the sigma algebra. Hmm. Okay. Okay. It defines a Borel sigma algebra. Okay. So today, I guess I can do, I can do the interval one today. Maybe that's it. Maybe. Maybe I'll tackle the Borel stuff. There's like two little problems in this book. There can be way more than this. Why is there four problems in this section? How many pages? The section, the section is one, two, three, four, five. It's like five pages. Eh, I guess four is fine. Okay. What the fuck? Okay. Alright, let's get this one done. I can, I can get this one done. It's my pencil. Okay, uh. Results. This is twenty three, this is twenty four. What did I say for this one? Measurable sets form an algebra. This one I'm gonna say. Measurable sets. Form sigma algebra. What did I write for this one? Just copy and paste this shit. I didn't even write it. The hell? I don't even know what to write. Um. Okay, let X be a set. Um, mum, 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 mum. And let I'm gonna put this to be how can I write this? Hmm. I wish, I wish I was good at writing letters. Fuck, man. Let's see, how can I write a good letter here? Hmm. There are some good ways to write an A. Cur- uh, cursive A, or maybe, is there it's cursive, I think it's a big S A. Cursive. A. Okay, it looks something like this. Or at least this is one very, yeah, 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 yeah. It's a one variation. Whoa. Something like that. Let A. This looks okay. Look like a star. Okay, let A be, uh. Collection of measurable sets. On X. Then A is an algebra. Okay. That's better. It goes here. Holy shit, why are my letters going down? Right here somewhere. Okay. And then for this one, I can write X be a set. And then we let use cursive S. I'm gonna say they're the same sets. A and S are the same. I don't know why I'm differentiating the letters. Maybe because it's like starts with an A and starts with a sigma, which is starting with an S. Let S be S be what did I write? Holy shit. Just gonna copy and paste this. And I feel like this is what breaks. Now this, I think this is what's breaking, the copy and paste. Let, let S be the collection of measurable sets on X. Then S is sigma algebra. I prefer this one's very, very easy. There's the, all the hard work, the hard, all the heavy lifting has already been done. So this is just a consequence of uh, result twenty two and result twenty. Q E D. Okay, let's see. And write that here. Little square. Okay, I think now is the time to do the the interval. Actually, maybe I can do the interval after. Let's see. Every interval is measurable. A collection of subsets of R is a sigma algebra. Okay. Already shown this. Already talked about this. But follows from proposition twelve, so I just did this in the proof. Since every open set is the union of a countable collection of open intervals, by the preceding two propositions, every open set is measurable. Okay. Every closed set being the complement is also measurable, okay? A set of real numbers is said to be uh, G delta set, provided that it is the intersection of a countable collection of open sets. Interesting. Let S be the collection of subsets of R. Then S is contained in the sigma algebra of all subsets of R. Okay, I guess maybe it is better to do the interval one first since all that stuff is kind of dependent on open sets, which can be defined in terms of intervals. Okay, let's see. Um, mumumum, let's see. Result. Two point twenty five. Every interval is measurable. Not just even not even open intervals. Every interval. Okay, every. Like, I don't know how else to restate this. Every interval is measurable. I'm just gonna write it again. Who cares? Okay, what's the proof looking like? Since the collection of measurable sets is a sigma algebra, to show that every interval is measurable, it suffices to show that every interval is of the form A to infinity is measurable. See problem twelve. Okay. I bet you should do this one first. Holy. If this isn't the sigma algebra. Proof that if a sigma algebra of subsets, let me just write the statement. Contains all intervals. Okay, so basically what this is saying is that if A to infinity is in S. That implies um. I don't know, see. To see, I I usually stands for intervals. This is actually gonna need something else. I need, oh my gosh. There's so many things I have to prove before I prove something. This is ridiculous. So what do I have to prove? I have to prove countable intersections. Shit, maybe I won't get through the interval one. Countable intersections. Are measurable. Shit. Okay, let K set of measurable measurable sets. Then intersection is measurable. Okay. What is it that we're trying to do? So basically, we're trying to show this. We want to show that the measure of some arbitrary set A, the outer measure is equal to the outer measure of A intersect K is equal to one. So we need to show this plus this. Okay, oops, not that. That's the same thing. This. Okay, we need to show that. Um. What do we know? We know this is actually equal to intersection. If I take the complements, I get the union of E K complements. Which is measurable. E K E K complement is measurable, and so the union is also measurable. So this is the same thing as this follows from. Yeah, so since this is countable, this has to equal, this means if this countable, this basically is oh my god, I gotta get my words together. This is not countable, measurable. This is measurable. And so we can actually create M A this that's equal to M star the intersect E K complement plus the measure of A intersect the complements. Yes, yes, that's this is how it works. This is how it works. Complements. Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is how it works. How are the games? The games are better, better than uh solo queue. Oh, this is solo queue. Better than solo queue in another game that we don't talk about in these parts. That that game that we shall not speak of. Otherwise, it will it will hear us and ruin our lives. And this is solo queue, no randoms. Exactly. She's I was debating on playing today just for like a little bit, but ugh. I got the same feeling when you saw when you saw me, when you saw me playing last time. I got the same vibe when I saw you last night playing solo queue before Justin hopped on. I was watching Tommy for a little bit before I streamed, and the games were looking kind of bad. Yeah, it was awful. It's just, it doesn't make any sense. Some of the things like just literally make no sense. Like one of the things that make don't make them sense at all is like why why do you AFK in like in a ten minute game? That will never make sense to me. The only time it will make sense is if their game disconnected, right? Like, which happens. But that's not always the case. Like people people AFK just because they're petty or or something. I don't know what's going on in their heads. Sometimes they go AFK physically, sometimes emotionally, and sometimes it's AFK in their brains. Yeah. You can tell like when they like go AFK like in the brain. It's a, it's it's insane how low the win rates like. I've been seeing a lot of like forty four, forty three. Like, how do you get forty four, forty three percent win rate? It makes no sense. It's I just can I can never understand that. That's crazy. Barry showed me a thirty five, a thirty eight percent. Oh my gosh. The sky's the limit. Yeah, they must have won like all the bot games in the beginning and just started losing nonstop. I actually had a thirty percent player like only one time, I think, in the in the time that I played the game. And man, they you can tell when it's a thirty percent player. It's like really bad. Since isn't there a tournament today? Did you play in the tournament today? Cause I swear there was a tournament today. And so the set is measurable. Oh, it was a charity event. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I see. Yeah, I remember. It's a charity event. Yeah. L G one, G G's. I saw, I think I was watching a little bit of Overlord's um um, stream. I wasn't paying too much attention because I was at Costco. Last three matches. I need to go do some groceries. Should I go now before streaming or leave it for tomorrow? It's your Sunday. Honestly, I usually go when it's easier. I didn't even want to go today to be honest because I I woke up, I woke up kind of late. And by the time I woke up, there was for sure gonna be like a lot of people at Costco. And in my Costco, people have no manners. Like people just cut each other and like the cutting just makes it like makes the traffic of of, you know, the lanes so much more congested and chaotic. Um, so I hate going to Costco. Like, bro, just like Relax, you're gonna get to where you're gonna get to, you know, like. This is not. It's like kind of like the, the idea of um. Kinda not really, but similar to the idea of like the stoplight where someone's like behind another car and then they kinda like. They kind of pass the other car up. They change lanes, pass the other car up, and then they end up at the same stoplight. It's kinda like that. But I mean, sometimes, sometimes changing lanes is, is faster cuz uh. The timing of the light, but. It's, I mean, if you're going to the store and you're grocery shopping like. There's, it's, it's very unlikely that you're, you're that much in a rush. Where you, you need to do stuff like that, you know, it's just, it just makes things more hectic. I'm in a hurry to nowhere. Yeah, for real. No manners, man. I think in Japan, it's like. It's like way different, like people, people like are very, like they're much more polite when it comes to things like that. I wish things like that were a thing here. So. Okay, so we do this. And this is equal to. This is equal to. This. Oops, not this. During the weekends where I don't have a functioning car. Doing groceries online was a blessing. First time trying it and the only bad part was that they didn't deliver them on the scheduled time. Yeah. Do they, how mu- how much more expensive is it? Like, is it? Like doing it on, online? I should have actually done that for Costco. I don't know why I don't do that. Like, I can actually do that too on Costco. Why don't I order online? God, I'm so stupid. It was ten bucks for the groceries, so it wasn't terrible to be honest. I just. Shopped on my bed. Sales were the same. Yeah. Yeah, I need to start doing that more often. I hate going to Costco. I hate it so much. But it's like, it's like, it has everything that I need. Like, I can go to other grocery stores, but like. Um, because they don't sell in bulk and some grocery stores don't have everything that I need. It's just like, I might as well just go to Costco. Yeah, my girlfriend, um, before she moved, she told me like I should just shop online on Costco. And I was like, yeah, okay, I'll do it. But like, part of the reason why I didn't do it, like pull the trigger was. I thought it was gonna be super expensive cuz you know, like buying fast food online is like expensive, but. I think on the Costco app, it was free delivery. I don't know if I just, if I saw that correctly. I was like, what? Why aren't I doing this? And then I forgot all about it. And then I went today like a dumbass. Like a dumbass. It's this. Minus this. Think that's what it is? Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's exactly what it is. This is. Yeah, I think, I think, I think after talking it out right now, I'm probably never gonna go to Costco again. Cuz they do same day delivery. I mean, yeah, I won't get it like right now, but I'll get it the same day at least. Oh, this is. It's this. And then. This just becomes. Okay, I can erase this. This just becomes M A. Okay, I think that's good. That's good. That's good. Very quick. Actually, I should probably note also that I'm using. And. Uh, what was it? This one? Yeah, two twenty two. Okay, there you go. And now I'm ready to do this one. Suppose. A to infinity. It's in this. Any A. R. K. My girlfriend's going to Panda. Okay, so this isn't the sigma algebra set. This is in the sigma algebra. So. Um, already R is in there. So R is already contained. I don't need to show R. Um. I don't think I need to show the empty set because that's also in the sigma algebra automatically. I just need to show the other ones. So. The complement of this is in here, so that means. Negative infinity to A. Is equal to R. That is in the sigma algebra. This is in there. Hmm. Oh, yeah, yeah. Negative infinity. To A plus. One over. One over K. No, A two, no, negative infinity A. Is equal to. The intersection. Negative infinity to, what was it? Negative infinity to A plus one over K. That's in the sigma algebra. Okay. This somewhere gets smaller, so it's approaching A. Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Okay, um. Hello, Mister Smort. Hello, Mister Babs. How you doing? Do you work today? You don't work weekends, do you? Trabajas. Trabajas. What's today? Today, today is. Oi. Sabado, but hoy is today, right? Hoy, hoy. Hoy, hoy. Domingo is Sunday. A, B is also in the sigma algebra, so that's the same thing as. Um, what was it? Um, mum, mum, mum. Negative infinity. To B. Um, intersect. A to infinity. Which is in the sigma algebra. Or. A less than B. Damn, that sucks to work on Sunday. I think if I had a, a choice, I would rather. Wait, maybe not. I think maybe I like Saturdays more than Sundays. But in general, I don't wanna work on the weekend. I never wanna work on the weekend. Ideally, I would rather, I would want to work three days a week on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. If I work as a professor. Which is one of my. Which is one of like the prospects that I might do. I'm gonna try my best to, to put my schedule all on three days, which is Monday, Wednesday, Friday. This is the closest I can get to Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Work three days a week. Sorta. It'll work, sorta work three days a week cuz technically you have to grade and shit. Okay, A and B is in there. Okay, that's good. And I have also. Um. A to infinity. In here. That is just the complement. Which is in the sigma algebra. I got, I'm basically everything. I think I got everything in here. See the last one on the bottom. We have the closed set two. Um. A, B. That's just the intersection of. Negative infinity. To B. To infinity. Which is also in the sigma algebra. A less than B. I think that's the proof. That's basically it. Now I just need to center this shit. So it looks prettier. There you go. Nice. So all the intervals are in the sigma algebra. See. Um, did I get everything? I got everything. Yeah, I got everything. Okay, so all the intervals are in the sigma algebra. Okay, so this is the last thing I can do here. Every interval is measurable. Pants grab. Is it, do I have that emote? No way, it's not showing up. Oh, it does show up. Oh, there's me. Shit, that was about to echo. It shows up, you don't, you don't know what it is? You want me to show you? I'll show you what it is. Is it? It is. You see? When you use the emote? Whoa, inception. Not really inception. Yeah, that's the emote. It, it is, it displays if you have seven TV, um. As a, as a, what do they call this? Extension. Otherwise, it won't display. That's the pants grab. I see now, yeah. Yeah, if you ever wonder why people are like in chat or posting like these random words, typically they, they. Are like grouped together. It's cuz it's like an emote on seven TV. Sometimes BT TV or BTV, whatever they call that shit. Cuz, but more people use seven TV because they're more, they're like, this is like a larger library. And the emotes are a little bit more as Poncho would say dank. Yeah, I can't see it on my, on my OBS for some reason. I'm pretty sure you can make it so that it's, it shows on OBS, but I don't know why. Yeah, dank. Let me show you. I think I can show you guys what emotes there are. You go in here. I don't know if you guys can see this. See all these emotes? You got the badge emote, you got the chatting emote, you got the booba. You got the cocka. You got dono wall. I like to use this one when I notice someone's just talking to themselves. You got the draw. I like to use this in conjunction with, um. Looking. I can just also find it. Looking. What the heck? Why isn't it showing? There's the looking emote. This is like your unite player. There's a dent. You have a dent in their head. Uh, oh, there you go. Looking. And then draw. So if like someone's drawing something or either, yeah, so if there's someone's writing or drawing something. Sometimes you'll see people do this. There you go. Those are your emotes. Available on this channel if you have the thing. Someone's distracted. I know, right? I need to get this one done. It's the last one anyways. I'm not too worried about it. The last one for today. It's only like almost a page. It's almost a page. Okay. Since the collection of measurable sets is similar. Is the sigma algebra to show that every interval is measurable. It's devices to show that every interval is of the form. Every interval of the form A to infinity is measurable. So basically, if we can just show one. Which is in this case, this one, we can that automatically means the other ones are also measurable. Let. They're using it explicitly. They are using it. It's gonna say consider that interval. Setter. The interval. Uh, what was it? Negative infinity to or A to infinity? Or any. A and R. And let A be any set. Assume. A. Is not in A. Assume A is not in A since. Since the outer measure. A union. A. Just equal to. Outer measure of A. Plus the outer measure of. I decided to go out. The heck? Forgot to put on deodorant. Cocino. That's just equal to the measure of A. So it doesn't matter if A is in A or not in A. Bro, if you're going out and you forgot to put deodorant and just. Go to the nearest CVS or some shit, or if you're still next to your house, you just go back to your house. Don't smell like, don't smell like a. Like, don't smell. Old one in your car. Is it like a spray? Does it not get hot in your car? That should be melted. Always prepared, never lacking. Those are goals right there. Imagine walking back up. Oh yeah, you don't have an elevator. That sucks. Hey, but you get to exercise. Okay, um. Let's see. Assume A doesn't belong to the capital A. Otherwise, replace A by A minus A. From A minus a set A. If A's the minus a set A is measurable. So is A. We do have an elevator? The fuck? Why did I get the impression you don't? I swear you didn't have an elevator. Or is it broken? During hurricanes, I usually don't. Oh, I see. Well, wisdomy. How you doing? Getting more practice on the Lucario? How's the E speed coming along? You practicing that combo? I ain't got that much courage to play E speed in Rank yet. It's hard. It is hard. It's still hard with that E speed buff. But I think they knocked two seconds off the cooldown. That's actually not that bad. Because obviously, if you miss your E speeds, you're gonna get hard punished. But sometimes, sometimes if you miss it, you can kind of stall a little bit. Just a just like a little bit, and I think those two seconds are just like enough for. For um. For your E speed to come back up sometimes. Because what was it? Eleven seconds before? One point five? I thought it was two seconds, but it was like eleven seconds. That was unreasonable, like. You had, like, he just gets so hard punished if you miss an E speed. Oh, now it's seven point five, so it's so it's nine seconds. Yeah, eleven seconds is extremely high, I think about it, but it was some really high amount. And driving. Drive safe, man. Yeah, but one point five is, I thought it was two seconds. But I mean, one point five is still good. But again, like you can still get like you can still get hard punished, but like at least some some in some situations like. If you miss your E speed, there are, you know, some cases where you can just kind of stall a little bit. Especially if you're like in the team fight. Um. If you have bone rush, if you have bone rush and you haven't used it, but you're not at level thirteen, where you can kind of reset your E speed, you can use bone rush to stall. Yeah, before level thirteen is very difficult. You have to be very careful about how you use your E speeds. That's why I like when you when you get bone rush, it's not always ideal to to um E speed into. Uh, or bone rush into E speed like immediately right after the first one. Because like if you miss, if you miss your, if you miss your second E speed, then you're screwed, right? You don't have a you don't really have an out. But like if you know. Like if you know if um. If you know that your bone rush is going to like CC them long enough for someone else to combo the the enemy team. Along with you, then it's 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 worth doing that combo, in my opinion. See. Yeah, assume A is not in A. Okay, so. Alive or least be Lucario is harder, yeah. It's just so hard. It was like one of the E speed Lucario was like one of the. My favorite. Um. It was my favorite kit to watch on stream. Like if you watch like an Overlord or an OG. Like they make that shit look so good. And so broken. Dark heart got an emergency buff? What the heck? There's no wonder. It's no wonder I was hearing something about that. Is it strong? I haven't seen it. I don't even know how bit how strong it is. What the hell did they do? Dark Cry. Pokemon Unite. Let's see. I like the translation. It's win rate is well below the normal range, so we adjusted its moves upwards overall. Okay, this is what I'm looking at. Okay, so. It's got a s- a s- HP buff. Holy shit, it's almost a thousand. For level fifteen. Its defenses are buffed. Its special defense was buffed. Okay. It got a hundred percent increase in its nightmare damage ability. And thirty percent increased enhanced attack. So what? They reduced the cooldown here? Time to recover possession count. I don't even know what this means. Honestly, I still don't know what Dark Cry does. I didn't really look at it. I'm like so uninterested in it. Wait time, so that's got another, so it's got cooldown increases. Damn, they hard buffed this thing, I think. It looks like. Are we studying why the devs emergency pass this thing but not drop a Pico nerf? Yeah. Exactly. This is the this is the real, the real uh. The real math. It's unite move. The damage over time is a hundred percent increase. Interesting. Damn, that's crazy. I heard his unite move wasn't bad, though. Like one of the main issues with Dark Cry from what I heard, I don't know, I don't I didn't really look at it closely, was that its kit was just too slow. We aren't making enough money on Dark Cry, so we gotta buff it. Yeah. Honestly, you're starting to you're starting to think like a dev. Maybe they're hiring. Maybe that one, the one developer that they have left is like overworked and they need another one. See if uh, see if you can apply. I just don't know what to do when I'm getting trapped in that dark realm. I don't know how to counter that. I think that's why it's so strong, isn't it? Like. I've I've seen I've seen that. I also seen that ability. Um. I've seen that ability. Um. Through through a streamer's perspective, and they can't they can't see shit. Or is that my imagination? Like if you're using that move. It darkens everything, doesn't it? Let's see what they're saying. It's win rate is was well below the normal range, so we adjusted its moves upwards overall. Yeah, they they buffed everything. It needed to get close to deal damage, but its durability was low. Yeah, that was one of the reasons. Like if you get like. It wasn't killing anything when it's when it got close. Making it difficult to fight on the front lines. What is this? A Speedster, right? The Speedster? It's blue. I don't even know what it is, to be honest. That's how little I know about this Pokemon. A Speedster. Basically turned to an all-rounder. But wait. He is also an all-rounder and an attacker and. A support? Does it do support things? Uh, it took it the effort of putting the opponent to sleep. But the damage it did afterwards was too low. Okay, this is just like a translation issue, I think. So we adjusted the damage of its abilities and enhanced its attack. So it puts opponents to sleep? That's is that the reason why people say it it? It um works well with Wigglytuff? Because I don't know, to be honest. I hear, oh, yeah, we should play with Wigglytuff, but I don't really know why. I didn't really look into it, to be honest. If I'm not really playing, then I don't really look into the patch unless someone else is playing the Pokemon. Basically, so I'm at I'm at the super, so I'm fifty percent AFK. I've been nerfed. This is a Speedster, right? You should be playing this Pokemon. That's your that's your uh, that's your shit right there. Time to abuse it. Yeah, but. I'm not giving them money. Oh, yeah, I forgot. It's like in the in the. It's in the the fucking board game phase. But now that it's buffed. Now that it's buffed. Perhaps. This is crazy. Oh, I should probably log in just just for the sake of. Doing this because I think my account is going to be. Um, my account, my account can't go on hiatus for a while. Like I can't use the. I can't do the. The hiatus is like on a four-week cooldown, if I remember correctly. Or a two-week cooldown. Four weeks. Yeah, it's on a four-week cooldown. Four weeks. Yeah, it's on a four-week cooldown. Can wait a week? Yeah. I honestly don't. I am. I never buy these things. I can always wait. Interesting. I heard I heard or I saw somewhere that like something about Dark Cry and like. OP maybe it's OP now or maybe it's strong, but I didn't really look at it. Wouldn't be surprised. Is it unite? The unite I think is supposed to be pretty strong. That's what I heard. I heard the unite is like is pretty good. But like the the rest of its kit was just not strong enough. You just die too fast. And one of the the kits are also kind of clunky. It's a move where it can pop up from four or five circles. Is that your unite move? I have no idea, to be honest. I've seen that move. I don't know if it's the unite move. I think it's not. I think it's not the unite move, but I could be wrong. Yeah, it's the normal move. That's one of the kits. That's the clunky one, I think. Yeah, I think if it's in the I think if it's in the unite animation, like everything goes dark. Everything goes dark and everyone cries. You must show that. We must show this? The fuck? See, my girlfriend is done. Okay, what did I do today? Lot. I'll do the rest of this tomorrow.